All right, it's 5:32 on Thursday. Today is, I lost track of the days, September 10, 2020. Most of you are on mute, which I appreciate, and as we move forward, certainly unmute yourself. With that also, I'd like to note that Dr. Gonzalez is also present as an attendee in the meeting as chancellor. With that, then, I'm going to call this special meeting to order, and I'd like the record to note I'm convening the meeting at 5:33 PM on 9/10. I'd also like to note that Ms. Munoz, our student trustee, was unable to join us this evening for this meeting. I'm going to move forward and call roll for this meeting, Mr. Hendricks.
I am here.
Okay, we have beeping. Do we know why we have beeping? Thank you, Lauren. Thank you, Mr. Hendricks. Ms. McGrath.
Present.
Dr. Norini, are you there?
Just trying to unmute. I'm here.
Thank you. Mr. Sarr.
Ms. Sullivan, it's Ryan. Edgar just updated us. He's getting him to call in right now, so it should be very shortly.
Okay, I'll come back to Mr. Sarr, but Dr. Thor. Ms. Nguyen. I will show the record. Marie Sullivan is present, and Mr. Sarr.
Still trying.
Still trying. All right.
Could you hear me?
I could hear you.
Oh.
All right, so you're present. Let the record show that six of the board members are in attendance at this meeting. Before we start, I, as I've called this meeting to order, we have taken roll. Six board members are present. I have a statement I'd like to read for the record. And I'll start by saying to all of you who are attendees and to my fellow colleagues that there is nothing good about this evening's meeting, and I personally feel no joy or satisfaction as we convene tonight. However, when I became president of the governing board, I told people that I would lead our board in a way that valued transparency and integrity, even if that wasn't easy or popular. Well, I have to tell you today it doesn't seem or feel very easy. We are here today to vote on a resolution which asks fellow board member Kathleen Nguyen to submit her resignation. As a governing board, a non-binding resolution is the strongest measure we can take in this instance. Shortly after the investigative report came out, I wrote a letter to the employees of the district, and I wanted to read it here into the record. I'd like to update you about the chancellor's search process, given last week's release of the investigative report. When we began the search for a new permanent chancellor, we established processes and protocols to ensure the search process was both fair and transparent. Those protocols included advising everyone on the search committee to only discuss the candidates with a select few individuals who were authorized to have those conversations. Members of the search committee were also required to sign a confidentiality agreement, which clearly stated the appropriate way to conduct the search for the next chancellor, and also clearly stated many actions not to take. Unfortunately, as the investigation revealed, it appears there were violations of that confidentiality agreement by a member of the committee. As soon as I learned of the potential violations of our established protocols, I announced we would immediately pause the search committee's activities and begin an immediate investigation to ascertain the truth. I am deeply disappointed with the findings of the investigation. As a governing board, we owe our students, faculty, staff, and those who elect us the highest fidelity of conduct. Unfortunately, based on the findings of the investigation, all parties did not comport themselves accordingly. As long as I am president of the governing board, I will ask that all members of the board conduct themselves with the highest level of integrity. I am proud of the individuals who came forward and reported the apparent inappropriate conduct. They did the right thing for everyone we serve. I want to thank you for your continued focus on our students during this incredibly challenging time. The start of this semester has been unlike anything you've probably ever experienced, but because of your determination, our students have been and are off to an exceptional start. So, as I stated in that letter, as we gain more clarity about how to proceed, we will communicate our next steps accordingly.
Mrs. Sullivan, I'm sorry, can I interrupt you for just a minute?
Yes, please.
We moved Mrs. Nguyen over into the participant list at about five, about three, four minutes ago, so she's present.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Nguyen.
Yeah, I've been present the whole time, but I wasn't allowed to tell you, so it's okay.
You were on as an attendee, but now you're on as a panel.
When Dana came on, it kicked me out, but it's all good. I'm here. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So, I've read my statement, and I want to repeat that this isn't easy or pleasant, but I find it necessary. Everyone needs to clearly know that we will aggressively seek to preserve the integrity of the community colleges in Maricopa County. I hope my colleagues will support this resolution and vote to ask Ms. Nguyen to resign. But before we move forward, I have two points. The first point is that, as is my normal practice, I will conduct the roll calls of votes and discussion in alphabetical order. The second is that as a preliminary matter of today's agenda, I'm going to read for your consideration the provisions of the Board Member's Code of Conduct, Section 410 4C, which states, "When the board is to decide an issue about which a member has an actual or potential conflict of interest, that member shall disclose the conflict to the board and absent himself or herself without comment from not only the vote but also from deliberation." And with that, we will move to the agenda item as noted, which is the governing board discussion and recommendation to adopt a resolution pursuant to governing board policy 410, Board Member's Code of Conduct 10E. With that, is there a motion?
Ms. Sullivan?
Yes, Dr. Thor.
I move that the governing board adopt the resolution regarding governing board policy 4.10, Board Member Code of Conduct, parentheses, 10E.
Thank you. Is there a second on the motion?
I second. It's Dr. Norini.
Thank you, Dr. Norini. Okay, I'm going to call just for discussion on the motion, and as stated, I will call this in alphabetical order. Mr. Hendricks.
I do not have any comment. Thank you.
Ms. McGrath.
Thank you. I'm concerned about this investigation that was done. Was Ms. Nguyen ever allowed to testify? Was she ever interviewed? I can't find any of that in the investigation report or in this matter that we're discussing
Mrs. McGrath, what I can say is that the report is as presented, and I'm not able to answer that question for you, but I expect Ms. Gittler stated to us that she interviewed folks, and it was duly noted in the report.
I didn't understand it. She did interview Ms. Nguyen?
I believe in the, I can't speak from Ms. Gittler, but this report certainly stands on its own, and it was duly noted that Ms. Nguyen was interviewed.
Thank you. I don't see any, any of her comments, so apparently I don't know if they were recorded or not. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other point of discussion from you, Ms. McGrath?
No.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Norini?
Thank you. Yeah, I just, I'm really concerned about the report and what it says, and not just about the, about the search, but how it speaks to the board and the integrity that we have, and the need that we have, you know, especially in E sessions. You know, we know, I know that transparency is key and important, but there are also times when we do need to speak confidentially in E sessions and so on, and so that we can speak frankly and honestly, and we have to have that trust that when we, when we do that, that what we say is going to be confidential and not going to be let out of the room, because what stays in, you know, said in E session stays there. And after reading the report and hearing the report, I just, I just don't have that confidence anymore that, that we can, you know, have candid conversations in confidence that, and they won't be leaked, or they won't be shared. So that's, that's all my concern is, is that I think there was some, some trust that has been, yeah, has been violated, and it just in a hurtful, hurtful way. That's all.
Thank you, Dr. Norini. Mr. Sarr.
Ms. Sullivan, can you just briefly say again what we're voting on?
We're voting to adopt, I believe, Dr. Thor, would you like to repeat your motion?
Yes, I move that the governing board adopt the resolution that is part of our, I'm adding this, that's part of our board book, regarding governing board policy 4.10, Board Member Code of Conduct, parenthesis, 10E, close parenthesis.
I guess I'm still a little confused. The resolution says what specifically?
The resolution, oh, go ahead, Mrs., Dr. Thor.
I was going to say, the resolution is very lengthy. Have you not seen it? Have you not seen it?
I did not, no.
Mr. Sarr, it's in the board book that was sent last night, yesterday afternoon. It's also been posted on our website. It's in front of us right now on the screen. Can you see that? Oh, you're on the phone.
I've got it on the screen as well. If you can get through all the wheretwas and go down to the last sentence, that's what I'm looking for.
Okay, there are, are you asking me to read the document out loud for you?
No, no, Elsa's got this under control.
Yes, she does. She's pretty.
You just went to therefore.
Yeah, okay, there I am, okay.
So I will, are you asked?
I did, I haven't, I wasn't home until late last night with meetings, and I worked all day, so this is the first chance I've had a chance to see it. So, thank you. I'm good.
Do you need this to be read out loud? Are you okay with reading it on the screen? Okay. And do you have, okay, is there any further comment from you, Mr. Sarr?
No.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Thor?
Ms. Sullivan, I was the chair of the now disbanded chancellor's search committee, and I want to thank the several dozen members of the committee that worked very hard to get us to the point of having selected semifinalists, and like others, I am very disappointed that this is the way this process ended.
Thank you. Ms. Nguyen, this would be the time when I'm calling you for discussion, but I want to remind you before you talk that I previously read the board code of conduct regarding conflicts of interest. Would you like me to read it again?
I know, I, and I just want to restate to you what I think we're saying.
And before you do that, do you intend to adhere to the provision or talk?
I have a clarification question. Can I ask that?
Sure.
Okay. So, when you read that, my assumption was that I would not be voting on this resolution because it would be a clear conflict of interest, since the resolution is solely about me. Is that a fair assumption?
I can't interpret the code of conduct for you. That's not my role. That would be your decision based on how you've read the code or how you've heard my reading of it.
I have comments to the resolution, so is now the time for me to give them?
If you, I asked you if you would like to adhere to the board of conduct, and if you'd like to continue to speak, that is your choice.
It is my choice, and I'll, I'd like to respond.
All right, so it's point of discussion. Go ahead.
On August 27th, I joined my fellow Maricopa Community College District Board members in support of releasing the investigative report regarding the chancellor's search process. The investigation was initiated at the request of a board member who is now working actively to retain the support of the faculty union and thereby retaining her seat on the board. I voted to make the report public in order to ensure that the public would finally be afforded some level of transparency in what was a limited search process that was clearly politically motivated. I have remained silent for the most part in my ongoing effort to restore some level of professionalism to the management of this remarkable education system. As you all know, the students, faculty, and the taxpayers have had to endure years of mismanagement and turmoil on this governing board. I will address tonight each and every part of this resolution before, before us as part of my commitment to the health of the district and expose finally the sort of toxic political atmosphere that has poisoned this institution of higher learning. The resolution reads, "Whereas, prior to the beginning of her term, Kathleen Nguyen took an oath consistent with the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Arizona, the Arizona Revised Statutes, and the board policy of the Maricopa County Community College District to faithfully discharge the duties of a member of this governing board. I not only have faithfully discharged my duties as a member of the board, I have advocated tirelessly on behalf of the district, its faculty, students, and taxpayers, who through their generosity of spirit have funded this endeavor. Those taxpayers have regrettably funded this witch hunt, as well as for that, the members who support this should be ashamed." The resolution reads, "Whereas various provisions of a confidentiality agreement, a statute, and policies has been violated by board member Nguyen, I not only deny this charge, I condemn the process through which this charge was levied." The resolution really reads, "Whereas the chancellor's search committee confidentiality agreement, confidentiality agreement provides in relevant part, if I properly disclose or use information, I will be subject to removal from the search committee and other appropriate legal actions. Unauthorized use of, may also subject me to a civil or criminal action by the MCCD governing board and any affected individual. If you will note, I am one of four people on the confidentiality agreement to be contacted. Four candidates, either directly or through their advocates, were all referred to Gene Head through me in accordance with the protocols put forth by the selection committee. Four candidates, including candidate one, did that, and they were all referred directly to Diversified. Statements to the contrary are false. These accusations are also refuted by Diversified." The resolution reads, "Whereas an independent investigation established by the integrity of the chancellor's search committee process was compromised, requiring the search to be paused and ultimately canceled, and this breach of process reflected poorly on the reputation of the district. I agree that this process was compromised, but not by me, but by Dr. Linda Thor. After the board retained an investigator, Thor, independently and without board authority, contacted candidate one. This contact was made three days after an immediate family member's death. Candidate one said they did not recall most of the conversation, but made two points with Dr. Thor. One, candidate one did not want to file a complaint, sue, or otherwise pursue the chancellor's search. Candidate one praised the search process, and especially Gene Head, and did not believe he had done anything wrong. In this way, Thor interfered with an independent investigation and exploited candidate, candidate one for her political purposes. According to Diversified, it was Thor who on more than four occasions disparaged, disparaged candidate one in a private conversation with the search firm. It was not Thor, it was Thor, not Nguyen, who was advocating against candidate one." The resolution reads, "Whereas Arizona Revised Statutes, Section 38, 421, destroying public records, provides an officer having custody of any record, map, or book, or any paper or proceeding of any court filed or deposited in a public office or placed in the hands for any purpose, who steals, or knowingly and without lawful authority destroys, mutilates, defaces, alters, falsifies, removes, or secretes the whole or any part thereof, or who permits another person to do so, is guilty of a Class IV felony. A person not an officer who is guilty of conducted specified in Section A of this section is guilty of a Class VI felony. This claim is false. All records of the candidates were kept by the search firm as requested by our HR policy and by the search committee. Only Diversified knew who the candidates were, and there were 22 members of the search committee. Nguyen did not destroy the integrity of the search. I did not destroy the integrity of the search, and Thor canceled the search for political reasons and to keep the interim chancellor in place." The resolution reads, "Whereas board policy 4.0, governance, sorry, governance commitment provides, the purpose of the board on behalf of the residents of Maricopa County is to ensure that, that the Maricopa County Community College District achieves appropriate results for the community, a specified in board outcomes policy, avoids unacceptable outcomes and situations with a strategic perspective through a continually improved commitment to its vision, mission, and values. It was Dr. Thor who abruptly ended the search to leave the chancellor in place. This was done at the request of three other search committee members who were not interviewed and one who was questioned. The one member that was questioned felt that the search had been conducted professionally. All members of the committee were not questioned, only myself, Thor, and Keith Hefner. This was done intentionally to attempt to politically damage and make a partisan attack." The resolution reads, "Whereas the board policy 4.1, governing values, provides in relevant part our institutional values, the Maricopa Community College are committed to honesty and integrity. We value academic and personal honesty and integrity, and believe these elements are essential in our learning environment. Responsibility. We value responsibility and believe that we are each accountable for our personal and professional actions. Stewardship. We value stewardship and honor the trust placed in us by the community. We are accountable to our communities for efficient and effective use of resources. I have operated with honesty and integrity and responsibility. I have shown great stewardship in all accountabilities. To state that I have not contributed to the overall well-being of the district when there is substantial evidence to the contrary is more false claims and should shed serious doubt on the validity of this entire process." The resolution reads, "Whereas board policy 4.2, manner of governing, provides in part, the board will govern lawfully in a manner that is nonpartisan," I want to repeat that, "that is nonpartisan, with an emphasis on integrity and truthfulness in all of its activities and practices. Moreover, the, more specifically, the board will operate in always mindful of its civic trust, trust, trustee ship obligation to those who own the organization, the residents of Maricopa County. The board will conduct itself in a manner that complies with all relevant laws and regulations. The board will fulfill its, all of its legal and fiduciary responsibilities as required by the state statutes, the Arizona Constitution, and all state administrative rules. The board will cultivate a sense of group responsibility and should work together harmoniously in pursuit of this obligation. The board will conduct its business in a respectful and civil manner, always mindful of the Maricopa County Community College District's public image. The board will observe policy governance principles as the framework for setting forth these policy standards, expectations for the board's own process. Through these policies, the board will establish and adhere to expectations for its own conduct, addressing matters such as attendance, policymaking principles, respect of roles, respect for democratic processes, speaking to management and the public with one voice, and ensuring the continuity of governance capability. As this investigative report has made its way to the Democrat Party website, how do you sit here with a straight face and state that this is nonpartisan? From the timing of the release of the report, five months after it was conducted, to the call to faculty last night, to members to use this report to give to the pack, to mount campaigns against Boggs, Thor's opponent, and Lauren Hendricks. This board has no history of working together, except when I originally came on the board and requested mediation last year between Chancellor Harper Marinick and the FEC. Then every attempt was made by then-President Thor and then-hired gun Mary Ellen Simingson to force out someone who had served this district for 27 years. You have no idea how to conduct yourselves, and admonishing me with a fictitious base report, hardly seems the route to get this resolution accomplished." The resolution reads, "Whereas, board policy 4.6, president's role, provides, as the district's chief governance officer, the president's job is to ensure the integrity of the board and its process. The president has selectively provided communication and done so, and not done so in a timely manner. She determined that the Professor Demas situation in Scottsdale was not important. This was a professor who received over 6,000 death threats and 1,000 credible, 6,000 threats, I'm sorry, and 1,000 credible death threats. It was I who contacted the chancellor on a weekend to warn him of a potentially bad publicity situation. This president has referred everything to the interim chancellor, who has then deferred it to the FEC." Which brings me to policy 4.10. The concerned, the board and its members are committed to faithful compliance with the provisions of the board's governing policies. To uphold the board's integrity and reputation, the board will constructively address perceived violations of these policies. A, the concerned board member, or if applicable, the chancellor, is encouraged to have a conversation in a private setting with a board member whose actions are perceived to be noncompliant with board policies. If a complaint pertaining to a board member's conduct is conveyed to a chancellor by an outside party, the chancellor shall as soon as practical, practical, refer the complaint to the president for appropriate action as outlined herein. If the complaint involves the president, the chancellor shall refer to the board secretary for necessary action. This has not been done. There was no conversation in a private setting with the concerned board member. Therefore, the entire meeting tonight is out of process. B, second, if the concerned party is not comfortable pursuing such a discussion, or if the conversation does not produce sufficient resolution as agreed on by the concerned parties, either party shall apprise the president, who may choose to address the situation individually with the invol, with the involved party or advance to see. If the concerned involves the president's actions, the board secretary shall be similarly informed. Since the concerned board member is in fact the president, this has not been done, and thus we are again out of process. Third, if the first two steps don't produce sufficient resolution, or if the, or if in the estimation of any of the concerned parties there remains a credible concern that the incident may cause legal or reputational jeopardy to the district, the board will be apprised of the situation. The board was apprised of the situation, even though the accusations against me were not proven. One cannot use an outside investigation report as evidence, since the headhunter's response proves that the investigation misrepresented what he said and even omitted key points. Other people that were interviewed have shared their same concerns that what was said to the interviewer was not portrayed in the report. Therefore, as I've asserted before, the investigation was a sham, and should Gene Head's response be widely circulated, that would become evident. Also, other people that were interviewed, if they could respond to the report, no response was ever allowed. The report went out without any responses. The board may request that the chancellor arrange for an independent review to be conducted for the purpose of advising the board if noncompliance with its own policies has occurred by an appropriate individual. After receipt of the results of the review, or if the board deems it to have adequate information without the review, the board will make a subsequent determination by vote as to whether the board member's actions were consistent with, with board policy. There is no concrete evidence that I violated any board policy. You cannot say I destroyed documents by deleting inconsequential text messages. As Gene had pointed out, Thor also communicated him without CCing me as the vice chair, yet the investigation did not ask her to produce any of those communications, nor did she disclose that she referred eight candidates directly to the headhunter. If the board determines that there was no violation of expectation set forth in the board's governing policies, the issue shall be considered resolved. In light of the headhunter's assertions, assertions that the investigation was egregious and its misrepresentation, in the absence of concrete evidence of any wrongdoing, and given that we were out of process having skipped A and B, this issue needs to be considered resolved. If, in the judgment- If, in the judgment of the majority of the Board, Board policy has been violated, the Board shall take what it considers to be appropriate steps to remedy the situation and protect the interest of the district. These may include, one, reminding the Board member of the expectation and fiduciary duty to cease such actions. This has been done. Limiting any authority that has been delegated to the Board member to represent the Board. I don't know what authority, and I have a question about this, that you are wanting to remove. And a resolution publicly admonishing the actions' behaviors. If you proceed with this, you had better be very specific about which policies I violated include the concrete evidence. Speaking to a prospective candidate before that person applies and before they make an application is not against Board policy. In fact, we were encouraged to talk to prospective candidates, as stated by the headhunter. I offered only my opinion, which is of no consequence to anyone. My resolution requesting the Board member's resignation, I will deny this request. If the party deemed to be in violation of the Board policy as an officer, removal from the elected officer position. I am not an officer. Excuse me just a second, I apologize. Whereas Board Member Winn has conducted herself in violation of these standards in ways found by an independent investigation to have significantly tainted and irreparably damaged the chancellor's search process. Yes, that did not happen. The process was completely intact. We had eight top-tier candidates selected, and after knowing who they were, Dr. Thor paused the search, went looking for a reason, and found me to be her scapegoat. She has praised the interim repeatedly and worked in conjunction with the FEC to restore them to full power. The Faculty Association is at the heart of this issue. I was one of 22-member selection committee who encouraged applicants to apply. None of the other applicants have filed a complaint, including candidate one, who was coached into doing so. It was Thor who has significantly tainted, thwarted, and engaged in inappropriate and heartless behavior. One was even asked if she knew if my husband and I had a relationship with the headhunter prior to the search. We did not. We have not, and do not now. Candidate one denied knowing anything about it but was encouraged to come forward after sharing with two other Board members that she was not selected. The damage that was caused by only one person, and that was the chairman of the search committee, with her full ego-driven authority. Whereas the Board has, fully constituted body, has an obligation under its own policies to uphold the integrity and reputation. I've heard from my constituents that they believe you are petty, political, and abusing taxpayer dollars to continue with this resolution. The resolution reads, whereas Board Member Winn by her conduct has produced a severe detriment to the Maricopa County College District through creating a need to pause, then ultimately cancel, the chancellor's search process, and her overall behavior has significantly damaged the reputation of the district. The integrity of the chancellor's search process and the morale of the Maricopa employees, this damage that has been done to morale could be measured by every employee bullied, threatened, or conspired against by the FEC. I've heard from over 20 employees encouraging me to fight and to stand up to your political theater. Whereas Board Member Winn's actions have squandered valuable resources of the district, I want to remind this Board that you spent over $100,000 to prematurely remove Maria Harper Marinick, and $20,000 on this bogus report, and 2/3 of a chancellor's search firm fee. The resolution now reads, now before it is resolved, the Board Member Kathleen Winn is hereby censured and reprimanded by the governing board of the Maricopa County Community College District for the above referenced conduct, and that authority that has been delegated to her represents the governing board is revoked. I just want to know what details, what authorities that have been delegated to me that you are currently revoking. We've canceled the chancellor's search. The resolution now reads, be it further resolved, that the governing board of the Maricopa County Community College District respectfully requests that the Board Member Kathleen Winn resign as an elected member of the governing board effective immediately, so that the district might begin to recover from her actions with all due haste. Rounding out the voice of a duly-elected member of this Board, who has worked diligently on behalf of my constituents, would be the very last thing I would do, especially when such great effort has been made to lie, misrepresent, and posture for political gain. It goes against Board policy where we are not supposed to be partisan. The only person that has benefited from this debacle is Linda Thor. Anyone with an ounce of political savvy can see what this is. I'm empowered to work even harder for this district, its students, and all who understand the value of this Maricopa Community College system, not for my own selfish gain, but for the benefit of our entire community. My answer is not no, but hell no. I respectfully decline your request to resign, and I will now leave the call so you can discuss your resolution. Thank you for your time.
My next on the list for discussion, and I have no comment. So with that, I will move to the vote on the motion that was presented and seconded. And according again to my natural process, I am going to call alphabetically. So again, Mr. Hendricks.
I'd like to explain my vote.
Please.
I made a few notes. I'm not good at reading the statements, so I made a few notes, so hopefully I won't ramble excessively. I've been on this Board for four years, and in the four years, there's been a number of issues that seem to be significant to the public. We've had two presidents were removed and replaced. We almost had a third one removed and replaced. We've dealt with tuition for DACA students, which was a very sensitive emotional issue. We changed the chancellor. We eliminated football. We've had the normal discussions of taxes and tuition. We eliminated meet and confer. And through all of those issues, I was a president through a year and a half of those, and through all of those, I've probably gotten phone calls from prominent public figures that I could count on my fingers. Today, I've spoken with six prominent people, some of them elected officials, that I have lengthy conversations with, and there's at least six more I didn't have time to return calls to or respond to. So there's obviously a lot of interest in whatever's going on tonight. The ones that I talked to had very little information. They hadn't even taken the time to read the information that is publicly available now. And although I have great respect for all of them, I'm disappointed that they would call with input or suggestion when they haven't even bothered to read publicly information that might have influenced their own feelings. I'd like to say that this meeting tonight, this vote tonight, there isn't anything about this that I like being involved in. I'd prefer to just ignore it. In fact, I considered not attending the meeting. I also considered attending the meeting and choosing not to vote. But it seems incumbent upon me and probably to everyone else that we weren't elected to go hide from difficult issues, and we got through all the issues that I just mentioned. And I think we're expected to attend tonight, and we're expected to express our opinions on behalf of our constituencies, and we're expected to vote. There may not be any way for any of us to know exactly what the truth of every little allegation, every statement here is, but we've got to take the information we have and make the best decision we can with the information that's available to us. We have an investigation that was conducted by a third party, and it cast question on the board, on the member of the board, but also served on the chancellor's election committee, that being Mrs. Winn. We just heard her statement, and all due respect for her as well. She's indicated that many of the statements in the investigation are inaccurate, or they're perhaps distorted, or there are other facts that are missing. She seems to imply there's some sort of an undercurrent for political motivation to paint her in a less than positive light, and all of these things. I don't know that anyone can absolutely say this is correct or not correct, but again, we have to make a decision with the information we have. I don't see that hiding from a decision is a choice. I don't have firsthand knowledge of most of the report. I have firsthand knowledge of the emails that I wrote that are included in the report. I know about those. I have firsthand knowledge of a few minor portions of the report. I have personal knowledge of the comment that Mr. Sarr made to me directly, face-to-face, that is referenced in the report. The investigation reports that Mr. Sarr suggested to Mrs. Winn, in a conversation between just the two of them, that she resign from the search committee. My recollection, when I spoke to Mr. Sarr personally, and we were talking about other issues, this wasn't our primary discussion, what I recall is he told me that he recommended she resign from the governing board. Perhaps I misunderstood, perhaps I remember wrong, but it appears that everyone agreed that Mr. Sarr recommended to Miss Winn that she resign from something. So something he knew or he had heard caused him to think that this was significant enough that he recommended to her one-on-one that she resign from something. I do know that firsthand because I spoke to Mr. Sarr face-to-face. I have personal knowledge of the response that Jean Head made regarding the investigative report because he sent his comments directly to me. The email came from him to me, and I'm assuming that email went to each of you. In his email, Mr. Head provided some additional information that was not included in the investigative report. Additionally, he recalled the timing of a conversation that was mentioned in the report differently than another person did. He remembered the content of the conversation to be the same, but the timing, he thought, was different. Otherwise, his comments didn't significantly change the information in the report, in my opinion. And as I'm weighing these different things, we've got to see if some of the stories match, some of them don't, and we've got to use what information there is available to decide which information to rely on that's available today. When I received Mr. Head's email, the salutation on the email that he sent on September 5th lists his employment at Diversified Search, but the letter that was attached looks like it was written in a Word format. It doesn't have any letterhead on it. It's not signed. It may not be relevant, but I find this peculiar, given the communication is from a person in a professional field that deals with highly professional people in these searches. I also found it odd, in his letter, that there's a press release announcing his departure from Diversified Search and his new employment and his welcoming to a company called JRG beginning on August 11th. August 11th is a full month before he sent an email to each of us on the Board using the salutation of his previous employer. This may not be relevant, but we have to look at the information we have available and decide what's credible and what's not. And I just, I found these things odd in his communication. There may be additional information that will come to light that casts the facts here in a different light, but today, these are the facts we have, and these are the background we have that we've got to make a decision with. If more information comes before us that indicates our Board policies have not been violated, it'll be a different decision, but the information that we have leads me to think that our Board policies have been violated. And if that's the case, I don't see that we have a choice but to affirm this resolution. If we chose not to take some sort of action, and these facts are correct, then we're complicit. Well, at this point in time, I reluctantly vote aye.
Thank you, Mr. Hendricks. So you noted as voting aye on the motion. Ms. McGrath.
Thank you. I'm very troubled by the fact that this was the first time, apparently, that Ms. Winn was able to testify. And I'm used to governing boards where we discuss things ahead of time, hash it all out, talk about it, and we haven't had that opportunity here. We've gone from an investigative report that apparently Ms. Winn might or might not have had some input in, but we were not informed of it, which I thought was strange, that the report didn't include her comments, and straight to this resolution. And it just really bothers me that we are moving so rapidly from report to resolution. I would like to have an opportunity to discuss everything and get input from these various parties. So I'm going to abstain from voting.
Thank you, Mrs. McGrath. Dr. Norene.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hendricks, for putting words to a lot of the thoughts that I had, and just trying to have a hard time kind of formulating the thoughts. I appreciate you putting words to the thoughts I had. With that, I vote aye.
Thank you, Dr. Norene. Oh, excuse me, sorry, alphabetical, Dr. Sarr.
Yeah, just to clarify, I did have a conversation with Mrs. Winn, and my only comment to her was that she should resign from the committee. Excuse me, from the committee. Never did I say that she should resign from the Board position. And in fact, I think this resolution is a bridge too far. I think our policies probably don't go that far for something like this, in my mind at least. So I vote nay.
Thank you, Mr. Sarr. Dr. Thor.
I vote yes.
So Ms. Winn is not present, and so it's my vote. I'd also like to offer a couple of comments, and one is that my vote is based on the facts that were presented in the investigative report. I can't comment to Mrs. McGrath's comments about interviews. Certainly, this has been in the public domain now for a while. And I'm very cognizant that there are levels under Board Members' Code of Conduct 41010E. But as Mr. Hendricks stated, to do anything less than respond to what is articulated as egregious behavior in the investigative report without the integrity that's necessary to make hard decisions, I think would deny the report. So with that, I also vote aye. On my vote, then, the record will show that we had one nay on the motion, one person abstained on the motion, one Board member was not present due to a conflict of interest to vote, and four vote yes. So the motion passes on the non-binding resolution that would invite Mrs. Winn to resign from the governing board based on the activities reported in that. So in closing, I just want to say that I found, again, no pleasure in this, but certainly, I want to thank everyone for being present. I recognize, regardless of the position you took, tonight's vote was probably one of the more difficult ones, but unfortunately, based on policy, et cetera, it does need to be done, and I thank you for your commitment to our students, our faculty, and our district, and our community. I hope we can move forward to attend to the work that needs to be done for this district and in concert with all of our stakeholders to ensure that our students, faculty, staff, and everyone get the rich education that they deserve from our district. And with that, I'm going to close tonight's meeting with a note that the next regularly-scheduled governing board meeting is September 22nd at 6:30. It will be probably one of our last remote meetings. So with that, thank you all for your attendance this evening and your attention. Good night.